I follow this regular meeting in Raton City, Michigan.
Mayor Sigara.
President.
Mayor Protem Tutterly.
President.
Commissioner Schuster.
President.
Commissioner Jacamo.
President.
Commissioner Honeyfield.
Could y'all please join me at the pledge of ladies?
Yes. The pledge of ladies is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. Couple of announcements, our next regular city commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, 6:00 PM here in the chambers. All city offices will be closed Friday, April 18th in honor of Good Friday. And at this time, we have some proclamations we would like to, uh, deliver. Uh, first one up is National Telecommunicators Week, April 13th, 19th, 2025. Proclamation, National Telecommunicators Week, April 13th through the 19th, 2025. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or medical, emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of emergency services is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officer, officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Raton Dispatch Center. And whereas public safety tele- telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety. And whereas the City of Raton telecommunications have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, repression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore do I, James Neil Sigara Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through April 19th, 2025, National Telecommunicators Week. Say that four or five times. In the City of Raton, in an honor of our telecommunications whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and seal because the seal of the City of Raton is affixed this 8th day of April, 2025. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Uh, next one up, National Library Week. Mr. Jacamo.
Whereas libraries offer the opportunity for everyone to correct with others, connect with others, learn new skills, and pursue their passion and know whether where they are in their life journey. And whereas libraries have long served as trustee institution striving to ensure the equitable access to information and services for all members of the community regardless of rich race, ethnicity, creed, ability, and socio-economic status. And whereas libraries adapt to the over ever-changing needs of our communities developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the population they serve. And whereas libraries are accessible and good places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge safeguarding that physical and digital resources for present and future generations. And whereas libraries are essential public goods for fundamental institutions and working to improve society, protect the rights of education and literacy, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And two, libraries, librarians, and labor, library workers are joining libraries, supporters, and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore does James Neil Sigara, City Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, do hereby pronounce the April 26th to 12th as National Library Week and encourage all citizens to visit their libraries and celebrate the adventures and opportunities a city unlocks. For all, every, and witness whereof, James Neil Sigara sets his hand and seal because the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this 8th day of April, 2025. Signed, James Neil Sigara, Mayor of Raton.
All right, next up, we have Child Abuse Prevention Month.
National Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2025. Whereas April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, CAPM, it is a time to highlight the importance of families and communities working together to prevent child abuse and neglect. And whereas children are vital to our city's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. And whereas all children deserve to have a safe, stable, nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting, sorry, affecting both the current and future quality of life of this community. And whereas communities that provide parents with social support, knowledge of parenting and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with stress and nurture their children to ensure all children grow to their full potential. And whereas the City of Raton and Youth Heartline partner together to provide prevention services to the children and families of Raton. Now therefore does James Neil Sigara Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, hereby proclaim the week, April 21st through the 25th as, 2025, as Youth Heartline Child Abuse Prevention Week. And we urge all citizens of the City of Raton to participate in the following free events to promote family connection, building, build up the community and prevent child abuse. Show Your Blue campaign, wear blue to show your support, April 1st through the 18th. Email your pictures to r casa at youthheartline.org. Pictures will be posted on Facebook for a chance to win a weekly grand prize. National Show Your Blue Day, wear blue to show your support, April 4th. And the classic night at the movies, bring your family to watch Encanto at the Schuler Theater on April 30th. In witness whereof, James Neil Sigara hereunto has set his hand and seal and caused the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this 8th day of April, 2025.
And we have one more, it is the Behavioral Health Mental Health Awareness Month. More protests.
Proclamation, Behavioral Health Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2025. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there is a strong research that diet, exercise, sleep, and stress management can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. Whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from behavioral health services from seeking help, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now therefore does James Neil Sigara Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Behavioral Health Mental Health Awareness Month and urge all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Raton to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. And witness whereof, the mayor has set his hand and seal and caused the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this 25th day of April, 2025.
Mr. Phillips, introduction of new employee.
Uh, I believe that was scheduled to be a police officer that may or may not have been able to attend this meeting. So I think we are safe to say not going to do that this evening.
Item five, items from citizens present, at this time we will entertain a conversation from citizens out in the public. Please keep your comments brief and we will not discuss matters of personnel. Come forward and state your name, please.
Let me pull out my cheat sheet so I don't forget things. My name is Tim Giuhulis. I moved here about just under seven years ago. I'm a retired teacher from the Denver Public Schools. I was an art teacher and administrator for 25 years and I developed art programs. I also owned restaurants and bars in Denver area. So I've had a lot of experience in working with people, developing programs, and getting things together. I retired here in Raton because I really fell in love with this place. My wife and I really sought out something special and we found Raton and we moved up into the Bennett neighborhood and we were absolutely thrilled with being here. So I wanted to make sure that I thank you folks for letting me be here. Mayor Sigara, I appreciate you taking some time and thank you for the invitation, Mr. Tutterly. I come here with a plea for the arts. I am an arts advocate. I was an arts advocate for the state of Colorado for education for many years. And I feel the arts are extremely important for a community. I think the arts should be celebrated in every community. One of the things that really does and makes the arts important is it develops culture. In this town, we have beautiful culture, we have mining culture, we have mountain culture, we have farming and ranching cultures. We have so many beautiful Latino cultures that come together here in this town. And I think it's really important to celebrate those through the arts. Economies can be revitalized through the arts. Beautification projects such as the First Street, uh, Main Street. And thank God, we won the Main Street last, yesterday, and it's quite an honor to work with Brenda Ferry. And I enjoy working with her and I will continue to do that because I believe in the Main Street idea. And I think little towns like this can be fantastic by using the arts. Arts are essential for education. They make rounded students. The arts develop math and science and writing and give the students a place to use those school, to, those tools. Senior citizens in our community are lacking at arts access. They need to feel alive. They need to feel something special. And as an approaching and a senior citizen myself, I feel it's important to really start looking at how we can find ways to make it better for them too. Why I'm here, this is why I'm here. I'm here to introduce to you the Raton Art Space, a community art studio. It is going to be located at 1026 South Second, which is commonly referred to as the old Compass Building. Um, and on a generous donation from the Reed family, Sarah Reed and her father, we have been given a lease for a year, a free rent to promote this and get it on. Again, why I'm here, because we only have a year of that free lease and we will be coming to you again. The Community Art Studio is going to collaborate with anybody who wants to use the space. This is not one group. We are an open community space. The idea is that anybody can use the space at any time and it'll have equipment, art supplies, and teachers there to help. I've already spoken with several people who are interested and want to be a part of this project, including Raton Media Works. And today I had a wonderful greeting with the new Raton Learning Lab, who is going to be located directly across the street. And we are already in discussion on setting up a curriculum for those computer-educated kids to get some hands on learning through the arts. So I'm really here today just to tell you that we are here. And we are on private property, so we're going to proceed with your blessings or not because we really believe strongly in this. Sarah Reed is probably the co-director or maybe even the director because I don't want to be that person for long. Um, and she's also the director over at the Santa Fe Trails Children's Theater. So we have a connection there. And we will be beginning our, our adventure here, if anyone wants to call it an adventure, on April 26th, the same day as the Raton, uh, Rats Fest, Ratsville Rats Fest. We will be open house from 9 to 11. And we're going to have Blue Sky Ranch, this is kind of, I'm telling you all these people involved, I want you to understand that this is a community thing. We are really not making it just an art gallery or something like that. This is a place for the community to come use. So Blue Sky is going to help us open. We're going to have some horses on the property and we're going to have Zia Youth. I hope, I haven't talked to Jeff yet, but we're going to have Zia Youth and some kids out there starting to draw horses and start beginning with that. We have gotten some generous donations already to get this place started, but we are going to need more, City Council. This is just the beginning. This is the grassroots and I'm planting the seed with you now. Yes, we do have some working founds. We are applying from, uh, for grants. And we're in the process of doing that, thankfully, from Grow Raton, the help of Grow Raton, which is truly appreciated. And we are going to start with the grants, but within this year, you will see me again. I'm going to tell you that again, that we're going to see you because we are going to seek city help. Because we feel that we are a vital part of the community and we are going to help to revitalize this town. Thank you very much for your time. I truly appreciate it. And I look forward to you and I invite you all, please come to the open house, walk through. And if I forget your face and your name, I'm 67 years old, I forget things. Please reintroduce yourself and I'd be happy to show you through what we are doing.
Do I chance have a card?
I don't have one on me, but I do have my card and I'll bring it back.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this time? Commissioner Schuster has asked for 10 seconds. Start the clock.
I just want to announce that, uh, April is National Occupational Therapy Month. So if you know an occupational therapist, tell her thank you, or him, but there you go, almost always her.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we're moving into the business. Item six A, deliberate and act on approval of the March 25th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Have a chance to go through them in your packet. If there are no corrections or additions, they will stand approved as presented. Any corrections or deletions? Minutes stand approved then. Item B, deliberate and act on event forms, change the scope for Cinco de Mayo, May 3rd and 4th, and the Raton Little League Opening Ceremonies, April 12th. Mr. Phillips.
Mayor Commission, uh, you've got some details on these two modifications to event applications in the packet. Essentially, we've already approved the event forms for the Cinco de Mayo Festival. They've just requested a street closure on North Ford Street from Savage wrapping around the east side of Ripley to, uh, encompass a car show as well, uh, something easy enough for us to pull off. So we would recommend approval of that and my department would be happy to provide traffic control devices for them to set up and expand their event. But we have no objections to that report.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Phillips on this one?
Motion to approve the change of scope of work for the Cinco de Mayo, May 3rd through the 4th.
A motion in a second to approve the change of scope for Cinco de Mayo. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Raton Little League, Mr. Phillips.
Mayor Commission, uh, we have the opening ceremonies coming up for Little League on April 12th. Any of you that have had the pleasure of attending those realize that it is a large crowd that gathers there. And they've got a full slate of games from sunup to sundown. For the first time that I've ever remembered, we have a forecast in the mid 70s usually opening ceremony, a bitter cold. Um, but they are requesting a simple traffic closure of South Third Street and adjoining T-shaped alleys between 10th and 11th Avenue, uh, just to keep people safe. It's, when we have folks driving by there during opening ceremony, it gets a little rough. Uh, we do have Hillary in the audience from Raton Little League if she'd like to add to that. But there again, we'd be happy to provide the necessary traffic control. They can set it out. It's very similar to what we did for the All-Star events last year. It'll just be a little shorter term, but we have no objection and we're happy to help with that. Hillary, anything that I missed on that?
Thanks, Jason.
Any questions, comments?
I have a motion to approve the change in the, uh, Raton Little League request for opening ceremonies, April 12th. Second?
A motion in a second to adopt. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, deliberate and act on voting delegate and alternate for the New Mexico Municipal League 2025 Annual Conference. Mr. Phillips.
Mayor Commission, you know, we have the upcoming New Mexico Municipal League Conference. Um, we are just looking for guidance on, um, how you would like us to let the league know who's going to be acting in the voting delegate in alternate capacity for the event.
Just a comment if I may, I think it's actually the, um, district elections and not the annual conference that we need the voting delegate, delegate for.
We will modify that.
And I would probably not be that person since I'm the current district through director. I mean, I could be, I'll, I'll be there.
Generally, you don't.
It'd be great for someone else to do that.
Yeah, and I think that's what Desiree's intention is. We weren't exactly sure who was attending and in what capacity, but I think.
It's going, it's going to be virtual this year.
It's virtual, it's one, it's at 2 o'clock on April 17th.
So will we do it in here? Can we do it in?
Usually you just do it at your house and, or in your work or. You could come here.
If we want to do it here, we should probably put out a potential for.
I, I can do it, it doesn't matter.
I have to change my work schedule, but.
I'll nominate myself to be the voting delegate. Nobody else is jumping up and down.
Do we want to go ahead and assign an alternate just in case something were to go wrong?
Holy shit.
Yes, I'll be alternate.
We'll put Lindy down as alternate.
All righty.
So we have nomination that Lindy and I be the, uh, delegates. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item D, deliberate and act on recommendation of award for the Schuler Theater Electrical Project. My understanding is, Mr. Phillips, we receive no bids for this project, so what is the wishes there?
That is correct. We regretfully received no bids for this project. Uh, staff would like to regroup with the design team, see what can be done, either solicit bids again or seek out a vendor through CES or State Price Agreement. So at this time, it would probably be appropriate to postpone this.
I would agree.
Motion to postpone the recommendation of award for the Schuler Theater Electrical Project and tell the time that we have decided on how we're going to move forward.
Motion in a second to postpone. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate and act on DJ and A, proposal for the civil design of the City Hall Drainage Project. Mr., uh, Mr. Phillips, almost called you Mr. Berry.
Backalbert.
Throwback Tuesday.
Wow, yeah, throwback Tuesday.
Mayor Commission, DJ and A, um, if you don't recognize the firm name, is essentially a new name for the firm that Richard Pfeifer was with in the past. Pfeifer, for he has, has been merged into a new firm. So we have a previous proposal where, uh, Richard has proposed some structural changes to City Hall. This is an addendum to that proposal for $7,942. And that will allow, uh, this firm to review geotechnical information once we do drilling of the site, provide drainage evaluation, which we believe ultimately is what led to the settlement issue in the first place that necessitates the repairs. And it includes some money for site observation for Mr. Pfeifer to be here while they are drilling, um, the geotechnical investigation holes. See if there would be any changes in design that would result from that. We do not have a geotechnical firm contracted yet to do this. Jayden's attempting to get pricing for that separately. But irregardless, whatever firm that is, we would prefer to have Mr. Pfeifer's services available to us at that time.
Questions, comments for Mr. Phillips?
Motion to approve the proposal for the civil design of the City Hall Drainage Project.
One second.
A motion in a second for the acceptance of, uh, civil design City Hall Drainage Project proposal. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, City Manager Report, Mr. Phillips.
Mayor Commission, I will keep it brief this evening. As you are aware, the mayor, city manager, and I joined the contingent from Raton Main Street in Philadelphia as they received their prestigious Great American Main Street Award, uh, yesterday. It feels like it was just all one big day so far. Uh, it was simply an awesome accomplishment with an incredible award ceremony held in the Massey Theater with over a thousand people present. And it was just, uh, exceptional. Uh, Raton had a great contingent of local and statewide representatives on hand to help celebrate our accomplishment. Raton Main Street is scheduled to attend the next meeting, give a full update, so I want to instill all of their thunder because they're still in Philadelphia. But, uh, we just want to express how proud we are of the hard work and dedication Brenda Ferry and her team, um, put forth to accomplish this task. Many of the firms there, our towns there had applied up to nine times before winning a Gamsa. It was our first and only attempt and we took home a trophy, so it was impressive. Um, one thing that was nice to tie into that City Manager Messis wanted to, uh, point out is the, uh, award for the firm from Iowa was an Art in Public Places type acknowledgement. They have a large tower where they painted rooftops to look down. We don't have a tower. We have Goat Hill. Interesting tonight that we have folks that want to do art projects, you know, with, without throwing water on the fire. We know partnerships involving non-city entities don't really just happen that easily. There's RFPs and stuff that has to be issued, but it seems to be a growing trend to, to muralize tops of roofs. tops of roofs, sides of buildings, things that kind of invigorate the art community and something that we could probably try to work in. But all in all, the trip to Philadelphia was awesome. I mean, we left there at 1:00 AM this morning and we're here today. So we made it a short trip. City Manager Messis traveled on to Washington DC to meet with our congressional leaders starting tomorrow. So I'll be piloting the starship for a couple of days if anybody needs anything. But it was something that, you know, as we walked around Philadelphia, even without our badges on, the awe of winning a Gamsa, you know, one other community in all of New Mexico has done it. It's been happening for decades. Silver City won it over 20 years ago. And, you know, it's tough to look at today and say, oh, how do you have a great American Main Street? You've got some holes in downtown. Obviously, we do, but it's about the struggle to keep things in there. And part of the video, if anyone gets a chance to watch it, is kind of the history of the development of a multimodal site was a tree and a dirt lot that's now got millions of dollars in investment, a new street, a new water line, an awesome park, you know, and hopefully pretty soon a fully renovated depot. And it takes years to get results like this. So I know Main Street would like to express their appreciation to the city for staying the course with them the last 10 years, being the fiscal agent, buying for the grant funds. But the credit duly goes to Raton Main Street for winning this award. It was awesome to see and that is the entirety of my reports this evening.
All righty, just to kind of echo what Jason said, it was just awesome. You know, it also showed us that we're not the only community in this country that has empty buildings and problems and all of that. It's throughout the country. And just to see what our group has done to help revitalize it and other groups was truly amazing. It truly was. So I was totally inspired by it and we're kidding Brenda half-heartedly last night that she ought to apply again next year, but we'll see what happens. And I can report Jason only ate one chili cheesesteak that I know of. So all in all, not a bad trip. Any other comments from commissioners? I want to also thank Mayor Pro Tim for emceeing the watch party yesterday. I understand that was a fun event. Anybody else?
I was going to comment. I had a great trip to Washington DC. I'll have a full report at our next meeting. It was really nice. Senator Lujan sat down with us the entire time in our appointment, talking about I-27 and upgrading roads and the state of New Mexico has just been incredibly supportive of that project. And we also got to meet with Representative Ledger Fernandez just for a few minutes outside the Capitol. So that it was, it was well worth the time and effort to get out there and talk. So that was good. Thank you.
Nice. Anyone else? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.